I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, February 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room, One Metcalf Square, Winthrop, Massachusetts, and we are being recorded. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Barry?
Ms. Powell?
Here. Please write the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Leonard, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, no delegates and visitors. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2023?
Submoved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a warrant, sorry, may I have a motion to approve warrant SVW 23-13 in the amount of $100,066.16?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for budget transfer in the amount of $80,259.16?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Um, flip stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for budget transfer in the amount of $4,000?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Under buildings and grounds, we have a request by Winarc to use the facilities for the Special Olympics. I will ask for a motion for that along with a, an inclusion of a waiver of the fee for that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Okay. Under reports tonight, we have a budget subcommittee meeting?
I'm doing it.
Quick, what's your?
Um, it's 5:00 PM this afternoon. We had budget subcommittee meeting here, AV room. Members present with myself, Ms. Petrie, in all sorts of terms with Ms. Swope, Ms. Howard. FY '24 budget discussion, preliminary start, very, very, very preliminary, and more to come. Done.
Excellent.
Yep.
Glad to have that started and underway. Superintendent's report.
Yes. So I will jump off of Mr. Matucci's report a little bit and just give the committee an understanding of where we're at with the budget. So the principals' budgets are due to me today. So they have had the last several weeks where they have been working with department heads and teachers and gathering information about needed materials and supplies, looking at enrollment, looking at student needs, curriculum needs, safety needs, and any other, any else, anything else you can think of that a school would need in terms of building their budget. The next step in their process is to gather all that information from their individual school buildings and put it into the budget document that you have all seen in the past, which is pretty comprehensive, really allows principals and staff to take a look at what their needs are and tie them to our strategic plan and to the goals of each individual school building as well as the overall school goals. In doing that, they put together then a less comprehensive but more, more detailed, I guess, request to me as well as the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Lori Gallivan. And then we take the process of meeting with principals and assistant principals as well as the Special Education Department, athletics, and facilities, and start to drill down what those needs are, double-checking contracts that we have, making sure that if we need new contracts with outside vendors, that we get those up to speed. And then we put together a pretty comprehensive budget request, which outlines the entire needs of the school district, and we bring that back to the school committee for your consideration and approval. This year, as well as years in the past, we've sent surveys out, and the surveys have gone out, I believe they went out a week and a half ago, to parents as well as all staff members, so two separate surveys. The purpose of those surveys is to gather information from families, asking them what they believe we need, asking their opinions on things such as what's important to you in terms of how we spend our budget, what would you like us to consider? There's space on the surveys for families to make notes and tell us that there may be something additional that they'd like to see, and the same for the staff. The next step in that process is to gather all that information, put it together, and use it as part of the consideration when we're looking at what the principals have outlined in the budget that comes back to me for consideration that I then bring forward to you, so that you are aware of the input of both the parents and the staff. Prior to COVID, we, I at this time, it was only me, did building meetings with both elementary and secondary schools, just a question-and-answer style for folks to come in and ask questions about the budget. There's certain things that people don't understand about the budget that they want some more clarity on, how the budget has developed. That was a very productive conversation with our staff. And so this year, we would like to do that, not only with staff, and that would be building base with the staff, where I'd hold a meeting and anyone, not mandatory, but anyone who wanted to attend from the staff could come up and ask those questions. It's a pretty relaxed type of a meeting. I'd do a mini presentation on what the budget looks like and how we gather our information, and then really just answer questions that people may have. We'd like to do that for families this year. I've had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Powell about potentially doing that through the school committee, so that the school committee could hold a forum in which I would attend and have information on what the budget looks like, but allow some in-person input from our families, again, in a relaxed atmosphere where people can ask the questions that they don't know the answers to, as well as advocate for what they believe should be in our budget. Then the budget eventually comes to the school committee for consideration, and then the rubber sword hits the road, really start working with the town to determine from the town's side what the town's allocation may be. For the last four years or five years, I believe now, we have presented a needs-based budget. Historically, we have received a level service or beneath level service. So level service budget is taking a look at everything you did in the current school year that you're in, and having that same level of service, same amount of people, same programming for the following school year. A level funded budget is a little bit different. A level funded budget is an appropriation from the town side that is the exact same amount that you received in the year prior. That's usually not overly helpful because goods and services go up every year, cost of salaries, cost of outside contracts, all of those items you can bet on are going to be increased in the following year. So a level funded budget would be difficult to live with. Level service budget is difficult to live with, and the difficulties behind that is year after year, we present what our students need in order to be provided with an equitable education to the surrounding communities, and so we will continue to fight for that and advocate for that. And at the end of the day, the appropriation of money is something that we have to live within our means. What's a little bit different in this coming school, next coming school year, as everyone knows, we, we are in a process where all of our unions, our teachers' unions and custodial unions and seven unions that we have, are all up for negotiations at the same time. So there is typically every three years a start over in terms of the increases in, in salaries for all of our staff. So we're in the midst of putting that all together. It's about a six-month process, so it does take time. We'll have additional budget subcommittee meetings with the school committee's subcommittee in the next few weeks, probably two, two to three within the next month, in which all of the information that we're gathering gets provided to you. So it's sort of a step-by-step process until we get to the actual school committee meeting, where you will take a vote on a budget that you would like to send to the town. So that's sort of just a little bit of an update on the budget process. We will be getting out to families and staff dates for those open meetings where people can come in and ask questions. I encourage parents and will remind parents by sending out an annoying Connect Ed message that says, please complete this survey. Please understand, I understand that people will have already completed it. So we're not pretending like people aren't completing it. I believe I had 190 families complete the survey in the first week, which is really good. But then we need to remind people because your email kind of goes to the bottom of your email contacts, and so we'll remind you again this week. If you've already filled it out, it's okay to ignore me. If you haven't, please pay attention to my email. We seriously look at each one of the surveys, and it does get drilled down for us into little templates that show us the average amount of people who feel the same way that you may, and that helps us decide what we're able to do. Next school committee meeting, the town manager as well as the new CFO are going to come out to the town, to the school committee to talk about, to certainly introduce Dylan, Dylan's last name?
Cook.
Dylan Cook. Dylan Cook, who is the new CFO for the town of Winthrop, and they're going to introduce him and talk about the budget process and about their budget process and give the school committee some more information. I've been working with the town manager quite frequently, so I think that's important for people to know. It's a different relationship than I've had in the past. Certainly, my relationship with Terry Delahanty was every single day, but he had two roles. He was town manager and the police chief at the time. We worked very closely, and I'm happy to report that that style of relationship is continuing with the new town manager, and it's, it's nice to be able to have those conversations daily, you know, because we are one town, you know, sharing lots of buildings and lots of money together. So, so those things have been, those conversations have been going well, and I do think it will be beneficial to the committee to hear from him and certainly to meet Dylan. Let's see, I don't have more things on here. Let's talk about the cold snap. So the most difficult part of my job every school year, and Patty will attest to this, is deciding whether or not to have a snow day. As everybody knows, my initial rookie conundrum, where I called a snow day without a drop of snow on the ground, has left a mark on me. So calling snow days is very difficult. I do have a tremendous amount of support around that from my 15-year-old son, who convinces me if it looks like it's going to snow to call a snow day, but also with the police chief, the fire chief, the Department of Public Works, as well as our school facilities manager. Whenever there is something that is going to happen, there could be a potential snow cancellation, it's not as easy as just saying, gee, I think it's going to be four inches tomorrow, let's cancel. I do consult with all of the people that I mentioned, minus my son, and I also consult with a group of North Shore superintendents to see what's going on on the rest of the North Shore. Winthrop's a little bit unique because sometimes we're responding to flooding and the gates closing, which has a huge impact on staffing getting to school. So so far, we, knock on wood, have not had to do that. I will say, and I think I shared with the school committee, our facilities manager is all about pre-gaming, and usually that leaves you well, and put out a really good document to all of our custodial staff. Some of our custodial staff has changed, as you've seen by some of our postings, so we have some new folks on board. He put out a really nice document, which was a pregame to get ready for this cold snap based on our own school buildings, with instructions about what was expected to be done during a 70-hour period leading up to and through the cold snap. I am happy to report that we did not have any issues. We did a lot of work with windows closing and temperatures being set a certain way. We do have some issues in some of our buildings, on some of our outside walls, that we're finding, we've had to run the water in some of the buildings on this, which was a very unusual cold snap, as we all know. But, you know, those are all opportunities for us really to relook at our facilities. So we found some areas, especially at the Athlete Cummings School, where some of the outside walls that face the playground are in need of some insulation, and we're super, super cold. But in finding those ahead of time, we were able to keep the water running through those, so we didn't experience any pipe breakage. So those are on our facility, you know, updates that we need to continue to do, and sort of have, some of them have risen to a priority level in the event that we have another cold snap. Today is the 100th Day of School, just in case anyone wanted to know, some useless information, and it's not useless to our students because many of our students participate in 100th Day of School activities that are academically related, making all the loops for the last 80 days of school, counting those loops, color coordinating them, making patterns, and the like. So lots of fun activities happening across the district in that area. Some good news that I want to report, some of the stuff that makes me happy because we all know I'm the Health and Security Police. We had an awesome Stop the Bleed CPR and AED training at our last half-day. Our teachers are reporting to us and are collecting feedback, improving our communication with our staff, that, that some of these emergency activities, although we don't like to think about them, are things that teachers really felt like they needed. Back in 2018, I think it was, Ms. Reynolds, or 2019, we did our first Stop the Bleed, which is tourniquet training, and that was very difficult for our staff, to have to think about putting tourniquets on people in a school. However, that along with CPR and our AED training, I think makes our staff more comfortable. Those are all techniques that you can use in schools, but you can also use them at home, you can use them in the mall, you can use them if you're driving down the highway and see an accident. And we did get some really good feedback from staff about being appreciative of that. The police department, Action Ambulance, the fire department, town health department, just a really good reflection of the collaborative efforts of those departments working together with the school department to accomplish a relatively large task. You know, we have well over 300 employees, we have limited time to do a lot of our professional development, but this one was a big one for us because of the benefit, you know, district-wide and town-wide. So we should have those completed by the end of next month, I believe, across all four schools, for all of those who are willing to participate. We had one of our own internal trainers, Mr. Max Arino, did some of that training, which was, which was excellent. The other thing we've done, you can anticipate at the next school committee meeting, a donation from one of our local foundations, which I'll keep anonymous for now, of money that will be utilized to update and purchase some additional AEDs, so the defibrillators that are in buildings. Well, by law, the school has to have one. Presently, we have one on each floor of the middle high school, on the middle school side and on the high school side, additional AEDs in the front office close to the gymnasium. At the Athlete Cummings, we have two AEDs, and at the Gorman Port Banks, we have one. We also have multiple, a handful, four travel AEDs, so those are with our athletic trainer as well as our coaches. So when our coaches go to away games, they sign out a defibrillator, and they take it with them. They're all trained in how to use them, and they take it with them to other outside games because we cannot rely on other school systems to have them, you know, right in the facility when we would need them. So we're protecting ourselves with those. So the donation that we're receiving is going to enable us to purchase a handful more of these devices with the goal of eventually having them on every floor of every building. We feel as though certainly the Gorman Port Banks and the Athlete Cummings need more devices. The way our schools are set up, we don't want to have to run from the third floor to the first floor to get an AED. We'd like them on every floor and ideally at every end of our buildings. We have one on Miller Field. We're looking to purchase one that sits on the outside of the fieldhouse. We do rent the field on occasion to folks, and right now, the box is located inside, so you'd have to be able to get inside the fieldhouse to get that, which our coaches on the field, when there are teams, have one on the field as well as inside the fieldhouse. But if you think about any of the youth sports teams that utilizes our facilities or outside agencies, we do let them know and give them access, but we would like to have them on the outside. So very special machines for the outside because of the weather conditions and the battery life and the pads. And our ultimate goal is to invest in all, they'll call Zoll AEDs, that's the manufacturer. The reason behind that is Action Ambulance came out and has done a full assessment and made some recommendations to us at, at no cost to the school district. And their, their buses or their, their ambulances and the equipment that they have is aligned with the Zoll AEDs, so that when somebody has a cardiac arrest and they are resuscitated on a field, when the ambulance gets there, there is no need to change out the pads on the AED in order for a much higher level of support in ambulance to hook up to that particular individual. So having Action come out and make their recommendations to us is extremely helpful. They also have, and it's not an excess, but extra pads that if we were to run out and couldn't get them, because sometimes there is a quantity issue in ordering, they have offered to make sure that we are fully covered with our pads no matter what. While we're waiting, they'll give us extra. So that's another really good relationship that we have built with Action Ambulance, and we're grateful for the support that they have given us. So Max Arino and Tadra Louie, who was a nurse lead along with myself, and Meredith Hurley met for about two hours with them. So we're excited for that. They were very impressed with the fact that we had won so many, but too that we were paying attention to it. And we were actually paying attention to it before the newscast came out about the football player who had a cardiac arrest. We showed them our action plans so that they know how we use our devices, and they said, well, that's good because we were going to recommend that you have action plans. We have action plans. So we're excited about that. Negotiations, just a quick update on negotiations. We have a tentative agreement with the nurses. The nurses are going to be voting. We had two units left, the nurses and the ESPs, and we had, we finished our negotiations with the nurses. We have a tentative agreement with them. They'll be voting in the near future, and then that will come back to the school committee for a final vote for them. And the ESPs, we had two sessions in January, or three, like I said, three sessions in January. And prior to that, as you know, we had asked the school committee, had asked for mediation. We agreed to go back to three more sessions, and we are waiting at this point for, we did not come to a tentative agreement, so we're waiting for mediation date from the Department of Labor. That has been filed, but we have not heard back as of yet. I will keep the committee updated on that.
Yes.
Just want to say, give a special shout-out to the staff. Your principals and their staffs that put together this budget, that is a heroic job. And every year, when we come up short, which we have, and they're willing to go back and be as articulate and careful as they have been for the last three years. That makes a world of difference because when it gets up to this level, you're able to be very articulate about what each school needs, and you can only do that with the data that's been collected underneath you. And I just, I just want to tell them, thank you so much. And every year, you never know when it's going to make a big difference.
Yes, you don't, and it, I can speak, I will speak for the staff because I'm well aware of how difficult it is to spend an inordinate amount of time on identifying and advocating for everything students need. It is so much easier to say, why are you bothering, why are you putting us through this? Why do we have to articulate everything we need when we know we're not going to get it? And the reason behind that is, we are here to advocate for children. And eventually, someday, when it works?
That's right.
We will be able to say, we pursued this, we persevered, and eventually, you know, I do believe that we will get there. It is a ton of work, and the teachers and ESPs and support staff and nurses and custodians every year have been more than gracious to continue, and they know what the end game is, and they know it's appreciated by the school committee, but if you don't tell the story about what we need, people tend to forget.
That's right.
And so we've created a chapter book, at least since 2017, I think is when I came on board. From '17 on, every chapter will tell you what we've needed, and we can, we can tie all that back to the goals that we've had. And it's, it's sometimes it's hard to reach your goals if you don't have what you've advocated that you need in order to achieve the goals, but I can tell you some miraculously, you know, we do pull some things off each year. It is getting more difficult and more difficult every year. We want our kids to have an education that's equitable to the communities around them and gives them every chance to be on a level playing field when they leave us and while they're here. But I thank you for that comment.
Yes.
This is also about the budget. I just wanted to say, I think this idea of having open meetings, both with the staff but particularly with the parents, is wonderful, so that's just a compliment that I want to give to you for that idea. And then, I guess, a question and just a suggestion. I think it might be helpful for people to know how that survey got developed, because there are clearly things on that survey and there are clearly things not on that survey. So how did we even come up with the criteria? And as well, I think in those meetings, it would be really helpful to know kind of what the survey said.
Sure. And I think, you know, part of having the survey is to get some feedback as to what else we can have in that survey. So the survey came from just a standard look at other surveys across the district, with a, being mindful not to overwhelm people with asking them too many questions, that they wouldn't put thought and effort into the survey. I think we've gotten a little bit stale with the survey, and we could certainly expand it a little more, and hopefully, when we have the parent sessions, they can offer us some, some information on that, you know, what else they'd like to see on that survey. We do give a space for parents to add what they want. Some parents add a lot, and would rate go for that. Some parents add nothing, and that's okay too. But that's a good suggestion, and I think those forums would be helpful in gaining that information. And although I'm not going to be closing the survey prior to the meetings, at least I can give an overview, a broad-brush overview of sort of where people are headed with their thoughts. Yeah, I think that's important. And I'd like to thank Jen too, because Jen has been, this might not be the first year Jen's made recognition that we have the, you know, parent session as well with COVID and whatnot. That, that was a little rough, so we'll back that.
Do we have any homeschool applications tonight?
We do not. I'm going to jump back up.
Do we have appointments, resignations, retirement? Or we have retirement? Do we have any appointments or resignations?
We do not, but we have, we do have a retirement of a dear friend of mine. He was an amazing, amazing educator, and I will read that to you. "Composing a letter of retirement is not an easy task, especially when you truly love what you do. It is time to reflect upon all the time that has passed with deep appreciation. I will be retiring in June of 2023 after working for the Winthrop Public Schools since 1987. I am so grateful that I had the opportunity to work with such outstanding team of administrators and staff. Winthrop Public Schools is not only an exemplary school system, it's a special place that my entire family has graduated from, my parents, my siblings, my children, and if I did the math right, in 2037, my granddaughter. For nine years, Winthrop High School has been my second home, and a piece of my heart will always encompass the administration, the amazing S1 staff, and the unforgettable students. Thank you for everything, it has been an honor. I would also like to request that the school committee vote to approve my buyback of my
Maria Martucci-Hodgkins. She didn't put Martucci in there, but I did and I'll tell you why. When I first started teaching, Maria was teaching here. Maria's taught here, obviously, for a number of years, had a number of children in between and now has a grandchild. Maria really encompasses everything that you want to be. She's an incredible special ed teacher, but more importantly, she is just a kind human who truly understands the most difficult of students in the most difficult situations that we see in the Winthrop Public Schools in her role. She has been a lifesaver to the school district in terms of creating a program that has allowed students to be educated in their homeschool environment. That takes dedication, that takes work, that takes creativity. More, I think most importantly, it takes empathy, sympathy, and advocacy for students who could easily be educated in a different environment and not stress, not, not cause stress and cause people to have to create programs and alternatives for students. I would say, if I had, you know, described Maria, she makes special education special and that's really, really important. We've had a lot of kids that have graduated from Winthrop High School in the past several years that I can honestly say without Maria might just not make it. So, we will miss Maria. Unfortunately for her, I know where she lives and I'm sure we'll be able to get her back to do some, some things and hopefully to coach some younger staff members on just how to become a Maria because it's not something that happens overnight. It comes with great coaching and a lot of dedication. So, I told her I wouldn't cry when I write this just because I know where she lives and eventually we'll be down the park when we're both retired playing with our grandchildren. So, thank you, Maria, for everything that she has done. And I, I think I read about her sick time buyback, so that would require a vote.
Yes. Yes. So, with, on that note, can I have-
That's a so cool request for sick time buyback.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Littary, second by Ms. Whoop. Any discussion? Hearing none, may have a roll call, please.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Abstain.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Whoop?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have a posting?
Posting, yep. The posting for the Gorman, William P. Gorman Fort Banks School principalship is up. We've extended it a little bit, gathering more applicants. Ms. Galvin has put together or is in the process of finalizing a team of folks to do those, reviews of those applications and hopefully within the next month, we will have someone to bring forward to me. We have no leaves of absence.
Okay, we have no new business or unfinished business, which brings us to public relations.
That me again?
Yes. Would you like to, we have a National Honor Society.
Sure. So, a lot of people are going to be calling off?
Yes, they've worked hard.
National Honor Society induction ceremony was held Thursday, January 26th and aside from a little bit of a conundrum with a lighter, it was a great ceremony. We had some trouble lighting the candles. The inductees were Shannon Abbott, Nadia Aldweeb, Emily Barrera-Espinal, Zineb Belgadi, Zach Bogus, Reese Burden, Ariana Bruno, Sage Kalinda, Glenn Callow, Donovan Cassidy, Alessia Kaluku, Sarah Delahanty, Samantha Demento, Kaylee Farrell, April Ferguson, Rachel Flynn, Kaitlin Fobid, Haley Forsythe, Carolyn Gonzalez, Annika Hokason, Evan Hogamile, Myra Ivanis, Henry Kalimi, Alessio Marcoccio, Ellie O'Donnell, Hannah Pakka, Robert Rich, Evan Rockefeller, Edwin Santa Maria Aguilar, Allison Sullivan, Kaylee Sullivan, and John Tracy. Second-year members, Kalen Barry, Christian Bonapani, Michael Callahan, Elizabeth Carney, Sarah DiGennaro, Jennifer Delahanty, Hina Asiabi, Ryan Gagnon, Samantha Harrison, Ili Ojaisa, Colin Kinselaf, Zoe Long, Mackenzie Margado, Natalia Melanick, Mia Norris, Delia Parko, Haven Pereira, Tom Petty, Corinne Powell, Ben Prue, Chris Rainey, Joseph Hermano, and Lily Talent. I'd like to also congratulate the Winthrop High School January Athletes of the Month, Libby Carney for track, Ben Prue for track, and Aliano Ronan for gymnastics. And just a reminder about preschool registration. Preschool registration begins on February 1st and it's open until February 28th. A child must be four years old by September 1st of 2023. And just a reminder on the cost of the program. The full-day program runs Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 1:00 and the yearly tuition for that is $6,400. The half-day morning sessions are Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 10:30 and the cost of that program is $3,300 for the school year. The half-day afternoon sessions are Monday through Friday, 10:30 to 1:00 in the afternoon and the cost of that particular half-day session is $3,100. More information can be found on the Gorman Fort Banks website or by calling the Gorman Fort Banks School and asking for that information. And that was all I have on that as well.
Okay. I will add that the High School Parent Teacher Club meeting has been rescheduled for Monday at 6:30 at the high school, so it'll be a week from today. And also, saw the show, The Moana Junior-
Oh, yes.
-and they, it was another phenomenal show. It's just amazing that our kids are so talented and able to perform so well. Any other public relations? Hearing none, I would like for motion to adjourn to executive session and the chair anticipates adjourning from executive session.
Motion.
Again. Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Whoop?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And for the record, this is to take a collective bargaining agreement hearing. And with that, we are adjourned to executive session.